Let me start again. Beginning on line eight, page two. If the committee to which the bill has been referred does not hold a public hearing within the 120-day timeline and the committee chairperson does not give a reason in writing to the prime sponsor for not holding a public hearing, the prime sponsor may call and preside over a public hearing on such bill and report out such bill directly to the committee on rules. So that's amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I understand where the mover of the amendment is coming from because I know the frustration at least that she has experienced. But I believe this amendment, you know, all it does is now even extend further the committee chairperson from not moving forward and having a public hearing, which is what the whole point of this resolution is, is to have a public hearing for bills that are passed after the four-month period. And with this, I believe it makes it more complicated, but I believe is, you know, should be an acceptable proposition and asking the committee chairperson for legitimate reason, or at least a reason in writing why a public hearing is not being conducted. So I would just amend this amendment, Mr. Speaker, and instead of "and," so that it's not just the 120-day timeline, but it's either that or the committee chairperson not giving a reason in writing, then the prime sponsor still can move forward. And that's really what the whole intent of this purpose, of this resolution, is to ensure that bills that come through this body have the public hearings conducted and the opportunity for the public to voice their concerns are brought forward.
On the Underwood Amendment, any senator wished to be heard? Is there an objection to the Underwood Amendment? What was your amendment? Okay. I didn't hear it. All right, fine. On the Rodriguez amendment to further amend the Underwood amendment to have "or" instead of "and," any senator wished to be heard? Any senator wished to be heard on Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, changing "and" to "or" doesn't really solve the concern of what happens if the committee chairperson does not give a reason in writing. It seems like the requirement for the chairperson to submit this in writing, it seems like nothing, you can't go to the next step unless the chairperson issues the written notice of why a public hearing is not conducted. If the sponsor, you know, I can't amend the amendment, so I would ask if the sponsor of the amendment to this amendment will withdraw, and I'll offer something which I believe achieves what the sponsors, not you, Senator Underwood, it's Senator Rodriguez. And I'll move to withdraw so he can clarify what the intent is.
Thank you very much. Any objection to Senator Rodriguez withdrawing his amendment?
Thank you. So after timeline, instead of the word "and," put a comma. And so the new sentence will read, and then take out "does not" and insert that which shall. So the new amendment would read, "If the committee to which the bill has been referred does not hold a public hearing within the 120-day timeline, comma, the committee chairperson shall give a reason in writing to the prime sponsor for not holding a public hearing, comma, and the 'and,' the prime sponsor may call and preside over a public hearing on such bill and report out such bill directly to the committee on rules." Very, very long sentence, but I think it brings us closer to what the sponsor is trying to achieve.
On the amended respechio amendment?
Actually, after hearing, sorry, after hearing, instead of comma, just make that a capital T, and then you have a new sentence. So it's, "If the committee to which the bill has been referred does not hold a public hearing within the 120-day timeline, comma, the committee chairperson shall give a reason in writing to the prime sponsor for not holding a public hearing, period. Then the last sentence stays, 'The prime sponsor may call and preside over a public hearing on such bill and report such bill directly to the committee on rules.'"
May we go to the chairman of the committee on rules?
No, it doesn't, because it's still, a new sentence says that the prime sponsor may call, so it's not contingent upon what the chairperson does. But I also thought that there was a 30-day window for the sponsor to hold the hearing, and so it was not open-ended. If the sponsor didn't act within 30 days, then that's not, anyway, I'll just go with this amendment for now.
So the amended Underwood amendment would have a period after timeline, capitalize "the," change "does not" to "shall," puts a period after hearing, and puts a, capitalizes the "the" prime sponsor. It makes three different sentences now.
After hearing, it's a period, then the last sentence is, so I'll start again. I'll start again. Mr. Speaker, may I proceed?
Go ahead.
I'll read the whole thing. "If the committee to which the bill has been referred does not hold a public hearing within the 120-day timeline, comma, the committee chairperson shall give a reason in writing to the prime sponsor for not holding a public hearing, period. The prime sponsor may call and preside over a public hearing on such bill and report out such bill directly to the committee on rules." Period, instead of semi-colon.
Is everybody clear on that? Because even the clerk still had the "and" in hers. On the respechio amendment to the Underwood amendment, any senator wished to be heard? Any senator wished to be heard? Senator Tom Ada, and then Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So is it to be presumed that the 120 days lapses, that then gives the prime sponsor of a bill the option to be able to call their own hearing and preside over that public hearing? Should we, subject to the, you know, the five-day notice and what's that, the open government law, whatever, I mean, is that to be presumed?
All public hearings.
Oh, so we don't have to state it?
Correct.
We just assume it? Okay.
No, not assuming, all public hearings.
Hey, I'm just saying, I can read this, that after that 120 days lapses, I can call my own hearing, but it doesn't say I have to do the public hearing, I mean, the notice and all that. Huh? Okay. That's why you guys are smarter than me?
Senator Siniklas, no? Okay, on the respechio amended Underwood amendment, any other senator wished to be On the respechio amended Underwood amendment, any other senator? Any objection to the amended amendment? Thank you. On the main motion, on the main?
Just point of order, Mr. Speaker. Did you just gavel the amendment to the amendment, but we're still on the original amendment?
Amendment.
So this is the original amendment now that we're back to?
On the, on the Underwood amendments?
Yes.
Do you wish to, you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Just as amended now, the, it states here in the last sentence, "The prime sponsor may call and preside over a public hearing on such bill and report out such bill directly to the committee on rules." Now, that's assuming that the senator that is the prime sponsor has a committee to report from. So if they're a minority senator, for example, and there is no committee, do they file their own report? How is that officially registered with the committee on rules in terms of a report being filed?
Who wishes to yield? Under the old practice, it was directly, you didn't need a committee, it was just the prime sponsor wrote the committee report and reported it out. For the five previous legislatures, that was the way, if anybody wanted to do it.
Right, I understand, but for example?
But it wasn't, it's not a committee report, it's a committee, it's a report from the prime sponsor on a bill that was, that they heard.
Right, I understand. But, for example, in the committee on rules, the composition is the senators with committees, plus we have two representatives from the minority. But assuming that the bill was reported out by a senator who is not a sitting member of the committee on rules, do they, how was that bill adequately represented on the committee on rules?
It is, it is filed directly with the committee on rules, and the chairman of rules is responsible for receiving it, clearing it, and saying, making the same amendments or sending it back the same way he does to ours if it's not properly formatted, sending it back and then accepting it as, and uploading it onto the, onto the website.
Right, but who would be able to, assuming that the bill was in the committee on rules, but the individual who the senator was as the prime sponsor was not actually a member of the committee on rules, how would they be able to make a motion to place that bill on the session agenda?
In the same way that it is now with the two representatives from the minority, they will be the ones that would ask for that bill as their, from their, from their membership.
Okay, so just to clarify then, the senator could be a prime sponsor, not on the committee on rules, they can have a public hearing, they can even file the report, but then they wouldn't be able to make the motion to place it on the agenda in the committee on rules? It would need to be a different senator to do that for them?
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to clarify that because it looks like the whole process is intended to streamline the movement of bills as being introduced by senators all the way through the legislative process, but still now, the committee on rules requires a third-party senator to be able to flow through that bill if that senator is not a member of the committee on rules?
Currently, the two members from the minority that are on the committee on rules make requests on behalf of the other six, I mean, the other four that they have on their side.
Right.
And there's nothing new. There is no new process.
No, but for example, Mr. Speaker, let's say that we had a predetermined limit on the bills that we were going to be putting on the agenda, those two individual senators on the minority, for example, would be able to decide which, which bills would be prioritized for all the other senators they're representing.
Correct.
I'm just bringing this up, Mr. Speaker, because, you know, right now, technically then, in the committee on rules, we still have senators who could theoretically not move forward other senators' bills, and there's no mechanism for them to be able to do that outside of the committee on rules. Just for the record, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment? On the respechio, on the Underwood amendment? Senator Morrison?
Mr. Speaker, I just want to get some clarification. Understanding that there are some bills that have exhausted this 120-day timeline, given that this is being incorporated now into the, to the standing rules, I'm under the assumption that those bills can be, using this provision, publicly heard. Am I, do I stand corrected on that?
I'm not the mover of this resolution.
Okay.
I don't know whether or not it's prospective, or if it's going to have a retroactive.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Any other senator wished to be heard on the Underwood amendment? Any objection to the Underwood amendment as amended by Senator Respechio? On the main motion, any further comments on the resolution itself?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of this resolution. You know, I've been in this body for, I believe it is, since the last half of the 30th Guam And then going into the 31st, they, they had a portion in the standing rules that did allow this action to take place. If the bill wasn't heard within 120 days, that the, the prime sponsor, the prime author had the option of having a public hearing for it. Then that was removed in the 32nd, and then again, in the 33rd, it was, wasn't entertained to place it in. And as you recall, probably I shouldn't bring back bad memories, but good memories and bad memories, they're all the same, I guess. In January, during our inauguration, that my colleague had a concern with the standing rules, that we did not have an opportunity to review the standing rules completely before accepting it. And I think sometimes that's what happens when we do things and we rush through it and, you know, election is in November, and the inauguration's in January. So from November to January, I'm pretty sure that the majority party had an opportunity to compile the standing rules, and it should have been distributed to all members prior to inauguration day. 30 days, 30 hours, but I don't think 30 minutes was, I mean, it was fresh hot off the press when, when we received the standing rules. And it comes now to today, where we're looking at amending the standing rules that an outset minority party did not agree with in the very beginning. So sometimes I think when we look at things as a body, and when a concern does come up, we should take it for, for what it was worth then. And, you know, and I give it to the majority leader and the committee on rules, who has been very, very accommodating and allowing us to place bills onto the session agenda, and has never, never, not once said, did not recognize us on the committee on rules. And I thank him for that. So I believe that going back to the, the issue of bringing the 120 days back is called for. I've had bills, myself too, that were in committee and didn't see the light of day or is still in committee, waiting for the light of day. But when I was looking online, and if you look at the definition of committee, it's a group of elected persons or appointed to perform some service or function, as to investigate, report, and act upon, a deliberative body. Some committee chairs, I'm not even a member of, and extends me that, that invitation, that opportunity to listen to what's going on in their committee. Some committee chairs, that I am a member of, also extend that invitation to me. And again, I'm grateful for that. Some committee chairs don't, don't even have a committee meeting, so I, I wouldn't know how would they perform. But it just goes to show, and it goes back again, to say that when we, as a body, or even individual senators, go in and introduce a piece of legislation, like a previous speaker had said, a lot of legislations that come through this body are those that we hear from the public, those of concern to the, that are of concern to the public. And every bill deserves to be publicly heard, whether we like it or not. It's not up to one individual to determine the fate of a bill. The committees, just like this legislative body, is a deliberative body and should be operated as such. About a month ago, I had some visitors that came by to my office to see me, and they said, "Senator, we wanted a particular legislation to come out, but we were told that the committee chairperson would not entertain the bill unless the bill had 10 co-sponsors." So that they can ensure its passage and it's veto-proof. That's not the way we operate. And I looked at her and I said, she goes, "Will you sign on to, to support this legislation?" And I said, "You know what? I will sign on to get it publicly heard, because it deserves to be publicly heard." And I'm pretty sure a lot of my colleagues here got the same visit from the same group And this is of a health concern, that they in the public felt needed to be heard, and to this day is still not heard. So I hope that my colleagues will support this resolution and bring back the 120 days that if a committee chairperson does not hear the bill that has been introduced, can be heard. I mean, we have bills here that have been introduced and publicly heard in seven days, you know? We have bills here that have been voted on three, four times, but yet, we can't get the other bills that deserve to be heard, to have a public hearing? So we take the voice of the people and we say, "No, we're not, we're not going to hear your bill until you get 10 co-sponsors." And this deliberative body, this legislative body, and the committees need to do what If you don't like a bill as a committee chairperson, that's not your call to have a public hearing for it or not. It's the people's bill. When you come on this floor and you vote yes or you vote no, then that's your voice to say, "I did not support that legislation," or "I supported that legislation." But picking and choosing what bill should and shouldn't be heard is just not right. We don't have thousands of bills that are introduced not to have a public, that we cannot have a public hearing for all the bills. I think as of today, we have 303 bills that were introduced. In the year, there's 365 days, can hear one bill every day if we had to, and still have days left over. And if the committees are, if it's just too much work, then like one of my previous speakers said, there's 15 senators that the people of Guam had elected to sit in this legislative Give each senator a committee. So I stand in full support of this resolution, Mr. Speaker, and I hope that all my colleagues support it, so that we can go ahead and move forward and have the bills of the people to be publicly heard, heard.
Thank you, Senator. Any other senator wishes to be heard on the main motion? On the main motion? If not, Senator Rodriguez, I'll invite you to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I want to thank all our colleagues for their feedback and their participation in discussing this resolution. Some may see this as really something that's not important, it's just a housekeeping rule that we're, we're trying to change, but my good, our good colleague, the previous speaker, really, really said it right, Mr. Speaker, is that we are a deliberative body. We've been elected, the people of Guam elected 15 senators, 15 people to represent their, their interests here in this body, and not one senator, whether you are a committee chair or not, should be able to dictate what the agenda of this body is. And so I'm, you know, I'm very pleased and happy with at least the majority of the discussions on this, on this piece of resolution here, Mr. Speaker, that will really put back some sense of order in this whole process. You know, we've seen that the bills that, you know, may have not moved forward in, in some committees are not all about not having funds, not having money. There's, the good previous speaker talked about a health bill that's been languished in committee as well, that really, that doesn't have any financial implications. It's just a matter of one individual not wanting to move that agenda forward. Whether you support it or not, it must have a public hearing, people's voices must be heard. And, and the voices of us here, Mr. Speaker, all of us here, never mind that, you know, you may not agree with me, we may not have the same philosophical beliefs, we may not like each other here for some reason or another, but look at us as the representative of thousands of our people. We come here, our voices are not our voices, at least that's how I see it, Mr. Speaker. My voice- My voice here is what I speak for on behalf of my constituents, of our people. And so this rule that we're about to make a change here, Mr. Speaker, really furthers that. It ensures that our people's voices are heard and ensures that the initiatives that we bring forward has, you know, has the light of day for our people to be able to provide that input. And if truly, Mr. Speaker, I've seen it in my bills too, that I've introduced, we had a public hearing, and the public comes and says, you know what, this is perhaps a bad piece of legislation. You know, I've held back and said, okay, you know, we'll get that information. If we're able to resolve the issues and concerns, we'll move it forward. If not, that's the proper form to do it, Mr. Speaker. And so I want to thank our colleagues and ask all of those others to seriously consider this because this does have real big implications for this body and for future bodies that we've been left behind. Situs Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the motion to send the resolution down, any objection? Thank you. I believe at this point, we have Bill 252. Senator Winny Barnes.
Situs Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak earlier and take that recess so that we can look at a substitution that would work with the administration's request to help fund the need to help provide the funds for the needed event for the Festival of Pacific Arts coming up. I do have a substituted bill, and it's Bill 252-33CORs, and it has an asterisk on it, as substituted on the floor. I did give it to my colleagues, everyone should have a copy. And I'd like to ask the body to accept it at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I, you know, when I signed on as a cosponsor, I signed on for the safety projects. Bill 252, as substituted on the floor, is far different from that, so I would ask to take my name off.
Any objection?
No objection.
All right. Does everybody have the bill with the asterisk before the "as"? On the motion to substitute the bill, any objection? Senator Nicholas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, typically with bills that have to do with appropriations, we do rely on a fiscal note to identify the availability of funds and to thereafter draft the appropriation based on the availability of funds as validated in the fiscal note. To my knowledge, Mr. Speaker, there is no fiscal note for this increase in the appropriation from $910,000 of the 2015 surplus fund to an additional $1.3 million of the same surplus fund. So I rise first, before raising any objections, to request at the very least a point of order to determine if a fiscal note is available to validate the additional $1.3 million that's being referenced in the substitute version.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, I did request for that, and that should be coming down now. So if we want to take a recess to wait for that fiscal note to come down, we can take a recess.
What is the pleasure of the body?
A point of inquiry, Mr. Speaker, on the fiscal note. Just to clarify, the previous fiscal note that came down to validate the availability of $910,000 and any subsequent fiscal note to all of a sudden increase that amount by another $1.3 million, I'm just curious now how we would be able to validate the two that have different amounts in them. But, you know, raising that for the record, I'm more than willing to wait for a recess to see if either fiscal note is different, or if it's the same fiscal note referencing the same source, how did the numbers all of a sudden just go up?
The fiscal note that was provided to the committee showed 2016. So we're getting the fiscal note from the administration right now, Mr. Speaker.
All right, we'll stand and we'll say--
Committee. The Guam Legislature is back in session on, and we were at Bill 252. Senator Nicholas, have you received a copy of the fiscal note?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we're just now in the process of retrieving the original fiscal notes. I can compare the two documents.
All right. Senators. Senator Wenyu Barnes, you may. Would you have any objection to us accepting the bill and starting the committee of the whole for the discussion? Okay. Senator Wenyu Barnes, you're recognized. Wait. Senator Rispisha?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, the bill's been substituted, that was accepted?
Not yet.
So, on the motion to substitute then?
She's, she hasn't made the motion yet. Oh, okay. Okay. Senator Nicholas?
Just a point of inquiry, Mr. Speaker, would it be possible for us to go into the committee of the whole on the original Bill 252 to discuss the two different fiscal notes before we decide whether or not we're going to substitute the bill?
Why not? It just asks all kinds of questions. It's committee of the whole, they're going to have to ask questions. On the Bill 252 as substituted. There being no objection. Senator Uggman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just for purposes of ensuring that the entire body, before we go move into committee in the whole, understands your rule of engagement, can I just ask you to please repeat it?
The rules of engagement will be that we will accept a substituted version with an understanding that there was an original 252 that had a $950,000 appropriation. Inasmuch as both are in this, all questions are fair game. There'll be no attempt to try to rule it as non-Germane and not subject to being questioned.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, but the original, what, 910?
Whatever the 900 is there. So, you can ask anything about the 900 and the 103, I mean 1.3? All right?
Just got to raise a point of information, Mr. Speaker. The only difference between the two fiscal notes is that one scratched off 2014 and then they just added more. So, I'm just bringing that up because it makes it very difficult for me.
And we can then ask the people where that came from. Otherwise, you're asking me and I can't answer your question as to why that change was made.
I just procedurally have a difficult time even accepting a substitute version when I cannot even understand how the numbers went from 910,000 yesterday to 2.1, 2.2 million dollars today.
And we can ask, we can ask that question in. All right. There is an objection. Call for the question, all those in favor of accepting the bill as substituted. Please raise your hand. Pass. Senator Rispisha?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, pursuant to the House rules, I move that we resolve into the committee of the whole since this is an appropriation measure and that the Oversight Chair for Tourism preside over the committee of the whole since she has oversight over the funding source.
There being no objection. We're recessed for a second.
I want to concur with what the previous, the previous speaker said, that these kind of statements should not go unchallenged or unchecked. Before you call us into recess, I believe that the comments of the previous speaker relative to these fund balances is comparing apples to oranges. The appropriation funding source for your bill, Madam Chair, is the FY 2015 hotel occupancy tax surplus. And this fiscal note provides a balance in the FY 2015 unreserved fund balance of 2.3 million. The comments of the previous speaker referenced the 2016 unreserved fund balance, which was 1.3 million, that was provided by an earlier fiscal note. I think what happens here is that these fund balances are dedicated per fiscal year. So, you don't carry over, I think the GBB, in this particular case with the tourist attraction fund, or any accounts throughout the government of Guam, they segregate it so that it's per fiscal year. And so, then when the audits come out, it confirms what those balances are. But we're talking about a 2.2 million dollar appropriation from fiscal year 2015 hot tax bond surplus fund. The fiscal note that you just received, that the General Manager, the Guam Visitors Bureau hand-carried to us, shows a FY 2015 unreserved fund balance of 2.3 million. The comments made by the previous speaker, even alleging that there's some fraud going on, it's comments based on the 2016 unreserved fund balance. So, I leave that for your disposition.
Senator Snicholas?
Madam Chair, the first appropriation was for 910,000 on the same aggregate accounting, and now it's for 2.2 million under the same aggregate accounting. It's not showing 910,000 from 2016 and 1 point, or 2.2 million from 2015.
Senator Snicholas, when we were talking on the original bill from the capital improvement project, I know I'm not supposed to speak from the table, there was an inquiry based on the wrong fiscal note that was attached because the funds that we were looking at was 2015. So, there was a request made to the Department of BBMR to give this august body the right fiscal note, and this is where we're at. With that being said, there was a request to have the folks from BBMR come in also to try and work on this justification. So, Senator Rispicio?
Are you able to bring BBMR down here, Madam Chair? Because that's what we need to do.
What we would need to do is call that -- so, I'm going to yield to the will of the body. It's 10:40 till 5:00. Did we -- let's take a minute recess. Ladies and gentlemen, before we take a recess, again, I'm just going to -- there were some statements made earlier, and I just want to clarify as Oversight Chair, when we were dealing with the original bill of 215, there was a fiscal note that was attached to that, and that fiscal note was dated February 19, 2006. And that was from fiscal year 2016, unreserved fund balance. And then you go across there on that row for the hot surplus fund, going all the way back to 2014. The unreserved fund balance as of FY 2016 is 1.35 million dollars. And the original appropriation of 910,000 would have depleted the hot surplus fund, going all the way back to 2014, down to a total of 441,000. That's the original fiscal note. When we look at the new fiscal note, referencing the same sections, it says the FY 2015 unreserved fund balance, and now it just jacks that up to 2.3 million. And so, my first question, Madam Chair, is how can the FY 2016 unreserved fund balance be 1.3 million, and the FY 2015 unreserved fund balance be 2.3 million in the same fund? The 2016 unreserved fund balance should be at least as large as a 2015 unreserved fund balance.
Hafede, honorable Senators, thank you for allowing me to be here. Senator Snicholas, I just came from BBMR, and also spoke, speaking to DOA, and they just provided this fiscal note as of today, April 27, 2016. I think the other fiscal note was presented in February 2016. And talking about the increase in the fund balance, I was told by DOA that the audit was just completed on the TAF, and that this current 2.3 is the correct number. And I brought up your concern about the difference, and they said this 2.3 is the correct number because of the audit. And, of course, this is a more current fiscal note, that this is the correct number at the 2.3.
Madam Chair, these funds are actual accounts in the government of Guam. Someone can just punch in keystrokes on a computer and pull up what the balance is on these funds. It's not a matter of the auditor coming in and all of a sudden, "Oh, we made a mistake." We should know what our fund balance is at any given time when we're getting a fiscal note from BBMR. Now, for the 2015 fund balance to all of a sudden magically go up a million dollars just to fit in with this new appropriation is very alarming to me, Madam Chair. This looks, this does not, this looks like fraud. This looks like forced balancing of an account. There's no way that the old note referencing the 2016 balance in the account that you should just be able to punch into the keyboard and a number pops up can show 1.3 million in February for 2016, and then all of a sudden you're going to go back, and that same account that you just punched in the numbers and it popped up to show the balance, you're going to say, "Oh, but a year ago it was 2.3 million." That's not how it works.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Senator Uggan, please take your point of order.
With all due respect to the appropriate questions that are being posed by the good senator, having these statements, strong statements made without representation of the individuals who signed off on this document, I think it's really doing a disservice to this entire process. So, I'm asking you, Madam Chair, to please consider inviting them in so that they can actually respond to the good senator's questions, and perhaps some follow-up questions coming from the rest of the members. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Uggan.
Madam Chair, I would like to concur with that, and I would also like to concur, or request, rather, that we bring in Department of Administration officials to be able to attest as to whether or not we can get real-time fund balances from these accounts, and as to whether or not BBMR bases their numbers they provide in their fiscal notes on real-time fund balances or not. Because for us to have this kind of a discrepancy is just incredibly alarming, and I want to have it on the record under sworn testimony whether or not we're dealing with real-time balances in these accounts.
So noted, Senator Snicholas. Senator Rory Rispicio, you have the floor right now.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to concur with what the previous, the previous speaker said, that these kind of statements should not go unchallenged or unchecked. Before you call us into recess, I believe that the comments of the previous speaker relative to these fund balances is comparing apples to oranges. The appropriation funding source for your bill, Madam Chair, is the FY 2015 hotel occupancy tax surplus. And this fiscal note provides a balance in the FY 2015 unreserved fund balance of 2.3 million. The comments of the previous speaker reference the 2016 unreserved fund balance, which was 1.3 million that was provided by an earlier fiscal note. I think what happens here is that these fund balances are dedicated per fiscal year. So, you don't carry over, I think the GBB, in this particular case with the tourist attraction fund, or any accounts throughout the government of Guam, they segregate it so that it's per fiscal year. And so, then when the audits come out, it confirms what those balances are. But we're talking about a 2.2 million dollar appropriation from fiscal year 2015 hot tax bond surplus fund. The fiscal note that you just received, that the General Manager, the Guam Visitors Bureau hand-carried to us, shows a FY 2015 unreserved fund balance of 2.3 million. The comments made by the previous speaker, even alleging that there's some fraud going on, it's comments based on the 2016 unreserved fund balance. So, I leave that for your disposition.
Senator Snicholas?
Madam Chair, the first appropriation was for 910,000 on the same aggregate accounting, and now it's for 2.2 million under the same aggregate accounting. It's not showing 910,000 from 2016 and 1 point, or 2.2 million from 2015.
Senator Snicholas, when we were talking on the original bill from the capital improvement project, I know I'm not supposed to speak from the table, there was an inquiry based on the wrong fiscal note that was attached because the funds that we were looking at was 2015. So, there was a request made to the Department of BBMR to give this august body the right fiscal note, and this is where we're at. With that being said, there was a request to have the folks from BBMR come in also to try and work on this justification. So, Senator Rispicio?
Are you able to bring BBMR down here, Madam Chair? Because that's what we need to do.
What we would need to do is call that -- so, I'm going to yield to the will of the body. It's 10:40 till 5:00. Did we -- let's take a minute recess. Ladies and gentlemen, before we take a recess, again, I'm just going to -- there were some statements made earlier, and I just want to clarify as Oversight Chair, when we were dealing with the original bill of 215, there was a fiscal note that was attached to that, and that fiscal note was dated February 19, 2006. And that was from fiscal year 2016's unreserved, looking at the 2014 hot surplus fund. The original bill had asked for surplus funds from the fiscal year 2015. I will note for the record that there was an inquiry, asked for that in reference to the fiscal note, and that's why we took a recess to ask that the fiscal note be in. Today, we receive an updated fiscal note dated April 27, 2016. The Senator from Telefofa was asked that they call in Department of Admini -- I mean, BBMR?
And.
And Department of Administration in. So, with that being said, do I need a motion?
Yeah, I'll do that for the body, Madam Chair. I moved that we recessed till 9:00 a.m., and so that those individuals that were requested to be here hopefully will be here tomorrow night.
Thank you. We are in recess till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.